All right, good evening, everybody. We will call the City Council Belvidere Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order of January 23rd, 2023. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Burton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal. Mahal is absent. Porter.
Here.
Fraser.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Okay, I don't think we have anybody registered for public comment. We have no public forum. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. We have none under Public Safety Unfinished Business. Item two, Public Safety New Business. Have a police, Woody, give us a police department update. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Since my last update, the police department has hired Jonathan Hernandez as an entry-level officer on January 6th, was the swearing-in. I'd like to thank all those in attendance, including Alderman Flurry. Thank you for coming, sir. He ultimately replaced Officer Winsler, who was let go out of the field training program. The last Thursday, Fire and Police interviewed another entry-level applicant, Carlos Ochoa, who passed the polygraph and interview portion of the testing process. He was given a conditional offer of employment and will be moving on to the psychological and medical. If he passes those, then he'll be going to the next basic academy, and he will be replacing Officer Barillo, who left August of last year. Cops and Fire Testing Service has accepted 20 applicants for entry-level testing for the police department. This is 100% increase from just last August. We will be conducting testing on February 4th at the Belvidere High School, and the department currently has four officers on medical leave, and we are looking at the possibility of having four retirements within the next year. Deputy Chief Wallace and Community Police and Coordinator Blankenship gathered over 16 pallets of food from Feed the Need, and they were able to provide them to five-area churches and three different mobile food pantries. And then the department conducted active shooter training with Boone County in the beginning of January at the Belvidere Central Middle School. This training concentrated on basics, just going back to some of the fundamentals, given all of the new officers and deputies that both departments have. That concludes my update, and I will field any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Woody? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So how many bilingual officers do we currently have?
Currently, we have roughly four, two fluent and two that can speak conversationally, but may not necessarily meet the classification of fluent in order of like our translation criteria, so.
Anybody else have any questions for Chief Woody? All right. Thank you, Chief. Fire Department, Item B, Fire Department Update. Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Your Honor. Since our last report, we were on the holidays over December, so it's been 56 days since the last report. There have been 483 calls for service, averaging 8.6 per shift. In the past two months, we've had six residential structure fires. Two of those were our own. On December 16th, we had a detached garage fire on King Street, and that was ours. On Christmas Eve in the morning, District One had a house fire on Russellville Road that we responded to. And then on Christmas Eve evening, we had a house fire on Caswell that we responded to. And on December 28th, District Two had another fire on Shaw Road. And then District Two had a fire on the 31st on... Chief, I'm gonna... How do you pronounce that road? Bankery? Bankery. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot. And then on January 14th, we responded with Cherry Valley to a house fire in Woodfern. So as you guys all know, we have auto aid partners. That means that when they have a house fire, we respond automatically, but thankfully, the reverse is true. When we have a house fire, they all come to us automatically. So of those 483 calls, 306 of those were EMS calls. We had six motor vehicle accidents with injuries, three gas leaks, three carbon monoxide incidents where we found CO, and 42 various assistance to the public. So since November, I didn't know if... I couldn't remember if I had reported to the council that 102 did catastrophically fail. We had... Did I report that, or no? No? So I think maybe not to the council as a whole. So 102, we had... It had failed, and we had chased down some repairs. We had gotten to the point where there was gonna be some major engine repairs that if we had fixed those, we wouldn't have known for certain that it would have fixed it, and we still would have been dealing with the body and pump. That's all, was all end of life. And so we stopped putting money in 102. Since then, happy to report, our 1992 Sutfin has passed its pump test and its performance and vacuum test. We've put some money into that and were able to get it back up and running frontline. So you'll see on the street, instead of us running 150 frontline, our 92 Sutfin is running frontline, and that'll be that way until our new engine comes, still expected in February or March. So just as a quick background, the 92 Sutfin was rebuilt in 2012 and then taken out of service in 2017, so it's got only five years on a good motor. So that will last as a suitable backup for us in the meantime. January 1st, we updated our records management software and actually went live with First Do Software. As you guys all remember, Firehouse Software was end of life on December 31st, which they did extend, but it didn't matter. We were already all set and ready to go with that. Just recently, Captain Cunningham announced his... He's going to retire on June 2nd. So he said he's... Will be turning in paperwork. He hasn't done that officially yet, but he's given me plenty of notice. We're gonna start some background checks with the Police and Fire Commission to prepare for that. So other than that, we continue to train every day, provide excellent service, and be there for the community when they need us, and I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief, 102, that was the one slated to be retired that the new engine was gonna replace anyway, correct?
That is correct.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Chief. And as the council's well aware, Item C, the ambulance service proposal results. As you're aware, we had put out requests for proposals regarding the end of the contract, which is April 30th of '23, that our provider actually Lifeline sold their assets, I believe, to Elite, but that was our contract that also went with it, and that contract expires of... As of April 30th of '23. We had been kinda caught off guard with that, and it required that we really act quickly in order to be able to make sure that that date, which is fast approaching, doesn't catch us off guard. I want to thank Chief Shadle for all his work on this, also Finance Director Shannon Hanson and Attorney Mike Drella. We had all decided that, you know, it might have been a little bit early tonight to bring these forward, but I think that it was the right decision because time is fast approaching. So with that being said, I am going to turn it over to Chief Shadle. He had written such a wonderful... Actually, a statement that he has, kinda summarizes it, a good summary of where we've been and how we have gotten to this point, and then we will have the proposals and talk about those and hope that we can come to some agreement here this evening. So Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Your Honor. I thought it might be easier if I'm up in front while I'm presenting, so I'm gonna give that a try.
Sure.
So one thing I wanted to thank for sure is thank OSF Lifeline. For a long time, they've provided this ambulance service to the citizens of Belvidere. They've done a great job, and they've done it subsidy-free for us. It was quite a shock in October when we got the news that they were being purchased. I guess we were shocked because we were hoping that it would never end. And so unsurprisingly, though, it did, and Elite had agreed to purchase OSF Lifeline in October, and so wow, what does that mean? They're our ambulance provider. So right away, as soon as we found out, I went around and met with all the area chiefs. I'm like, well, how do your communities handle the transport issue? How do you pay for it? In the past, in talking with people on other departments, they have... Were shocked that our ambulance was provided by a private provider with no subsidy. And very quickly, as you guys are learning, we learned the cost of running an ambulance and staffing an ambulance is extremely high. So when we got that news, we got all the information, and if you guys remember, before we did the RFP, we did the needs analysis. We went over that briefly, so I didn't include it in the PowerPoint, but council, do you guys remember that we were looking at 2021 data, and we found that, well, if we had one ambulance in 2021, it would cover 67% of our EMS calls. And then that second ambulance, it would cover about 92%. And that third ambulance was only about 160 calls a year within that we would have needed that. And as you see with the cost of ambulances, we knew one ambulance wasn't enough, and we knew three, there's no way we could afford. So two became our RFP. We sent out our RFP. We advertised it, and we did... We got back the three that we knew we would, but what I also prepared for you guys tonight was to answer the obvious question, well, can you guys... Can the Fire Department do it? I remember the Fire Department used to do it. Clayton, or Alderman Stevens, you were a part of the department, and, you know, we had five on duty, and one of those was an ambulance, and times were a little different back then, and we had two hospitals in town at the time. And, you know, fast forward 20 years later, here we are. So we did... We were waiting anxiously to see, well, what's the subsidy gonna look like, right? What's our... How much is it going to be? So in Elite, when we got their proposal back, we saw that their proposal was $119, 425 per month, so roughly $120,000 per month. And then Attorney Drell and I had to clarify. We said, well, what about the revenue? You know, the revenue that we saw, and I'll go over briefly in here. We estimated, or we didn't estimate, we actually had actual data from Lifeline that showed that the revenue from Belvidere in 2021 received was $849,000. So we said, okay, so it was $120 a month, and then they would keep all the revenue. So that answered our question. What's our subsidy? Well, our subsidy is $1.4 million, all right? And so, wow. So in meeting with all the chiefs, I learned about something called GEMT. So I met with Chief Halstrom of North Park, who utilizes Metro Paramedic Services, and then they licensed the ambulance under the district and found out that if they do that after a full year, they can get federal money for Medicaid transports, which equals about $1,000 per Medicaid transport. In 2021, we had over 400. So if you do the math, $400,000, half of that goes back to the state, so $200,000. So, okay, well, anything that's gonna bring in an extra $200,000, well, let's see if we can do that. So we're like, okay, well, with the RFP, let's send it out so we collect the revenue. That's the incentive. That's what GEMT does for us. If we are the provider, if it's... The ambulance operates under our license, we qualify for that money. That money is only available if you're a municipal provider, if you're a fire district provider, if you're a government entity that provides that service, and that's not provided with... That's not reimbursable if you are a private company. So that's one efficiency we would have. So, you know, we're looking at all the models. And so real briefly, with that just general introduction, I'm gonna cruise through this because you actually have that in its entirety in your handout here. So just to let you all know that this is our current situation. As you see, this is a map of Belvidere, and we have... Just trying not to stand in front of the camera completely. We have Station One there in the center, strategically placed in the center density, and then Station Two to the south. And if you look up north in Chief Kuntz's station, we have an ambulance in his station, and then we have one over by the mobile station on Logan and Belvidere Road there. So we corespond. Every medical call, an ambulance goes and a fire truck goes. If it's centrally located in the city, we get there first. Obviously, most ambulance calls require more than two people. We're moving people. We're... 10% of our calls are lift assists, so we're lifting people. We're carrying people upstairs, carrying people downstairs. If you haven't carried anybody lately, a full-grown adult, it's not easy to do with just two people, right? So it makes sense that you would have multiple people on the ambulance. It's also very important, if you're having a serious emergency, you want people to get there right away. So by the way it's set up right now, coming from four different locations and all being paramedics, the first paramedics that get there, we get there quickly, and we're able to stabilize the patient. We're able to do interventions and make sure the airway is okay, or start CPR, give Narcan, or do those things really rapidly. So we have been blessed with great medical service in Belvidere with paramedics. Our hope is to, and the goal of this whole project, is that we at least maintain our current level that we have. So you guys can read this at your leisure. Basically, a question that I would expect you guys to ask me, well, why can't we just do this with current staffing? Doesn't the Fire Department have 27 paramedics? Yes, we do. We do, all right? We have, on average, a daily... Average daily staffing is seven. So if we have seven on duty, let's think this through real quick. We have a shift commander, that's six. If we need two ambulance, each ambulance has two. We now have a fire engine with two people and two ambulances, each with two people, who are gone from the city one-third of the time. So if you're on the ambulance call, it takes about 90 minutes. You get called out. It takes time to get to that call. You get to the call, you stabilize the patient. Many... Most of the transports are out of town, so if you go to Rockford, you drive to Rockford, wait for the nurse, do the transfer of care, you have to write the report. It's about 90 minutes till you're back. So if we have ambulances, then you see... You hear our run data. We're running all the time, probably greater than six EMS calls a day, five to six a day, and those people are out of town. Well, what happens if there's a car accident? Or what happens if we have a fire? We're a Fire Department, too, right? What happens if District Two has a fire, and we gotta send an engine company? If we have a two-man ambulance or a two-man engine, we'd have to shut down an ambulance company, get at least one person on that engine to send them to District Two, because you know what? They're sending us three people and then some on our fires, right? So if you guys know the mission statement, we... I rewrote the mission statement in May. It has really two parts, and it kinda came into play with this. The first part is that, you know, we give great service. I'm making it shorter. And the second part is we're there for the community when they need us. And I'm like, when I was thinking of how to try and explain this, well, we're not effectively achieving our mission if we're not there for the community when they need us. If you have a car accident, or if you have a fire, or some of those more labor-intensive calls, medical calls even, because if we have a fire truck with two people and only one of them, they're not gonna be able to chase every ambulance call and help people on those. So we wouldn't be able to fulfill this... The second, just as important part of our mission is to be there when people need us. So that is why we really... I would strongly recommend against us taking over that. And before I move on, do you guys have any questions about that?
Thanks, Chief. I'm just curious, how did our staff compare back when we actually had ambulance in-house as to now, and what's the differences?
I am gonna defer to our historian.
We had seven men per shift, and we would go down to five guys per shift. So the ambulance was out of Sixth Street, so two guys would go in it. A lot of times, we'd drive past the fire station down here, go take ambulance calls, just two guys in an ambulance. Only a lot less firemen.
Do you remember what year about that was in?
That was about 29 years ago. We lost it.
29 years ago. And you... I know this would be really hard, but I couldn't find anything. Do you know about how many runs we had back then?
Oh, God, I'd have it someplace, but I don't know.
So I suppose I should have checked one of the historic logbooks. I could have checked that. I would imagine... I mean, when I started, I think we were at, like, we were under 2,000 runs. We were like 1,500, maybe in '06, so it was even quite a bit of time before that. I would estimate under 1,000 runs with the same amount of manpower, and now we're, last year, about 3,200?
Yeah, but I remember that when the city council was talking about taking the ambulance away from the Fire Department, one of the reasons I know it was 29 years ago, a little over that, because my pregnant wife was out front with a picket sign, and my oldest daughter just turned 20... The youngest daughter just turned 29.
Yeah.
My wife dated that for me, telling me that.
Well, yeah, it'd be easy to remember, then. You won't forget. So to answer your question fully, it sounds like our staffing was the same levels 29 years ago, but much, much less calls, much less population. And again, there was two hospitals in town at the time.
And like I said, we'd go down to five guys on a shift.
Yeah, so...
Seven total.
I'll take it one step further. Since then, the Fire Department's represented by the IAFF have collective bargaining agreements. I don't wanna give away the bag in open session, but obviously, if we were to take over the ambulance that required utilized jump companies, meaning having people jump from ambulance to a fire truck and a fire truck back to an ambulance to try and staff the department, and I know that is something the IAFF is very strongly against, would probably litigate if we tried to go that route.
Yeah, and I'd even digress from that, though. If we're... You see the run calls. I estimated that about eight hours out of 24 that we'd be... We'd have reduced staffing, so that'd be one-third of the time. So one-third of the time, we'd have one engine company available instead of two, meaning that if auto aid happens during that time, if we have a fire during that time, we wouldn't even have the most basic. We've... The most time-consuming thing of an EMS call is that transport, that reporting, all of that. We're, by not being tied to that as a Fire Department and not doing the dual response and have it separated how we do now, they are not obligated to that. So I've... We've had serious calls where we've been on an ambulance call, and we said, all right, you guys good? Yep, we're good. Or we'll load the patient in the ambulance real quick and then get moving. Serious medical calls, second, third serious medical calls, fires. I mean, there was... In 2021, there was one time that we had six EMS calls in 90 minutes. So 3,200 calls, 10 calls a day, you don't know... That's an average, but you could have 10 all at once and none the next day. Like, it's the... You gotta just staff to be available, and times were definitely different back then. What the city of Belvidere truly needs is they need transport paramedics. And so even if the next question that would be really intuitive about a jump company is, well, if we staff it with the Fire Department personnel, they're combined. They can do fire, they can do EMS. Isn't that a benefit? And I'd actually say, no, it's not a benefit, because if we had to say we had two engine companies and two ambulances, right? Well, we get a fire. What are we gonna do? Okay, we're gonna go... Our two engine companies are gonna go. Can either ambulance assist with the fire attack? I would say no, because one ambulance has to not go, because we have to cover the city. So even when we get a fire with engines, we have someone come cover the city. Even a basic fire on auto aid, Maringo comes and covers the city with a paramedic engine. So we need one ambulance to cover the city in case there's another emergency call, our last fire, there was a medical call during our fire. It happens all the time. And then that second ambulance, okay, well, will that ambulance be able to help fight fire? No, they need to be there to transport, just like at a football game, when people are engaging in high-risk activities, you have to have an ambulance there, ready to go, not tied up doing things. So that when it... In this situation, keeping it separate truly is reasonable. There'd be no benefit to having the dual... As much as I would like to say there would be a benefit to having the cross-trained individuals, the dual-response individuals, what Belvidere is losing is those transport paramedics, and that's what Belvidere really, really needs. So this stuff, you can read. So Lifeline 2021 data, we got this right from Andre's Billing. They gave me their information, and I was able to extract our data right out of it. And it just shows you some of the reimbursements. Since we're talking about taking the billing on ourself, Lifeline's average revenue per transport was $500 in 2021, 1,686 transports. Medicare reimbursement's right there on the right-hand side, Medicaid, private, no insurance in other, and then the runs by percents. I'll let you guys look at that at your leisure. PBS is the billing company of Metro. Metro was one of the companies that provided an RFP to us. They said that the reimbursement, our reimbursement would be about $209,000. Andre's, who does the billing for Rockford, Cherry Valley, Lifeline, used to do it for Lifeline. They estimated our reimbursement. So when I did any of the figures or calculation and estimating our reimbursements, I used the smaller amount, because I'd rather underestimate it than overestimate it. All right, so estimated revenue, that's something really important to the equation, because if we're talking about five years, like, what's our estimated revenue? How did we get that? If you see in year one, what I did is I found the monthly percentages, like, if you were gonna get a million dollars, a million dollars divided by 12 is whatever that number is, and if you said 100% of that is that, that would be an even number. If you had 100%, 100%, 100%, it'd be all the way, and then it would equal the total sum. So what this is from is, as I said, I reached out to many chiefs. Chief Coral said, yep, we actually just did this. We changed billing companies to Andre's, and this is our experience. So I got those percentages. That was what Cherry Valley Fire actually experienced once they started, changed billing companies. So obviously, month one, you don't collect any revenue. You're just providing the transports, and then it takes time to bill. Month two, zero. Month three, they got about 24% of what they would expect in a month. Month four, 76. Now, month five, it started coming in. So what I did is I took that $849,000, and I plugged it into those percentages, and I estimate that in our first year providing the ambulance service, if we collect the revenue, we'd collect around $650,000. Understand that that GEMT funding doesn't kick in till year two, and then so you'll see year two. Year two there, the... Has the... A 3% increase estimated, and then I... On one column, GEMT estimate from Andre's would be 1.15 million, and then a GEMT estimate from Metro would be 1.076. Again, I took the smaller number. Again, I took the smaller number. So I took that smaller number revenue estimate for year two, and I just added 3% for year three, four, and five. Go ahead.
Alderman Freeman.
Thank you. So the Lifeline 2021 revenue data, average revenue per transport, $500?
Yes.
I don't know anybody that's gotten a ambulance ride for $500, so is that the profit?
That's what they collect.
After the overhead?
Nope, nope. So that's what's actually collected. So I'm ambulance company, Sean's ambulance company, I say it's $2,000. A lot of places are right around $2,000. The GMT, once they do those calculations, they figure out the cost, they tell you what you're going to bill. And it's, so say it's $2,000 flat fee. Sean's ambulance company bills $2,000. I have Medicare. Medicare says, nope, we got an agreement, you get $406. Rest is written off. Medicaid, just like you see there on the, on the slide, nope, we have an agreement, you get 378. Private insurance, some covers pretty good, some not so good. So on average, you, if you have a high percent of private insurance, you get closer to that $2,000, but a lot of times you, you don't. Like, they'll have a max or a set price that the ambulance will, will cover at this amount. So, and then, no insurance on average, if someone didn't have insurance, they collected $83, and then other was things I couldn't figure out, what, like car accidents and other stuff. And so that average was $503. So that's actually all you collect. So that's all, so Lifeline, it doesn't matter what they billed, they, but they did bill around 12, or 15, or 1,700. Their revenue that they actually got was 500. So that's what that means. Yep. Okay. All right. So this is essentially all the options that we have. If you look at that first column, 1569, that's if we, and I'll just preface this up, up front, to purchase an ambulance, if we were to assume this, to purchase an ambulance is between two and three years. In October, when I was looking at this, it's about two years, but from what I hear now, it's about three years to get an ambulance. So we're three years out. Next question, are there any used ambulances? No, there's no used ambulance. There's no, they, supply chain limitations, ARPA money, CARES Act funding, money to county governments, municipal governments. So the demand is through the roof, the supply is down, hard to find, long wait times. The hiring list for the firefighters, there's 15 people on it right now, right? It's, it's not, it's not just a police department thing. The turnout for the testing is low. To get six paramedics and six basics off a test, that, we just took that test, and it's good through 24. So we get another test, another test, you know? I'm saying, if it was a possibility, and unfortunately, it's not, if it was a possibility in three years, it would take about three years to do. So maybe three years down the road, if, whatever we do, whatever you guys decide to do tonight, three years down the road, you say, you know what, I want to look back into the fire department taking it over? That's a possibility. Tonight, it's not a possibility, even if that was our, our sole desire, it's just not practical. When it happened, it takes time to hire, it takes time, all the hiring's done by state statute. But just to give you an idea of costs, these would be the labor costs of hiring 12 firefighters. That includes almost everything I could think of. It includes pension, healthcare, it includes turnout gear, it includes a radio, air pack, a bottle. It, it includes that. It includes two ambulances with power lifts and the automatic Lucas device, the AED machine. And then, so for those capital ambulance costs, what I did is I did it over 10 years, and then I, I always have trouble with this word, amortized it, thank you, amortized it over 10 years, and then added that cost. And so you'll see, 1569, the five-year cost is 8.7 million. Now, one thing I would mention, that after five years, year seven, year 10, there are some larger step plan increases. So that number would, would gap, it would increase versus a traditional cost of living increase. So that number, but then it would bottom out, because if you think about it, after about 10 years, these guys probably wouldn't be on the ambulance anymore. Some other guys would have retired, and they'd have brand-new guys backfilling. So probably around year eight or something, it would level out, and then just be the cost of living increase. But, so in a 10-year study, it does gap out even more than that. But in a five-year, you can see that. Metro responded, and their cost, basically, their, their system is, is they are a staffing company. They, they provide staffing and ambulance. So believe it or not, Harlem Rosco, Loves Park, North Park, Stillman, those firefighters in paramedics are not employed by the district. They're employed by paramedic PSI or Metro. So that's just been a way, they're a staffing solution company, they're a division of Superior, and they are actually a large company. They have over 4,000 employees. So they have some economies of scale between ambulances and staffing. So what they basically do is say, what type of, you know, right now, there's a paramedic shortage, and an EMT shortage, so, all right, we're going to have to pay a little more, so this is what the cost is going to be, and then here's our cost for the ambulance. But we do have economies of scale, so it's, it's less, and here's the cost of everything. Here's what it would take. These guys and girls work under your rules and regulations. They will be our employees assigned to you, you will have no additional cost, no additional liabilities, and you can essentially, they work for you, so you can use and make sure that they're carrying out your mission and your objective. So it's very, so that is the, that model. So what they do again, so that 1.659 million is, they take the cost of that, and then their margin is, is 7.5%. So they factor out what the cost is, and then, you know, nobody keeps their, they, nobody does everything for free, and so their expected return is 7.5%. In, in my mind, any other private company would, its margin would at least be 7.5%, probably more. No one takes on risk with their capital for less than 7.5%. So I believe that Metro's margin is as low as you're going to get, and I believe that they have some economies of scales for ambulances and employees. They are able to offer Blue Cross PPO insurance at affordable rates for their employees because they have so many employees. Do you have a question, Your Honor?
Alderman Freeman.
Thank you again. So if we were to go with Metro, the 16.5 up there, 1, 1.6, with our city reimbursement of 209, really brings it down to 1.4, right?
That is the next slide.
Okay, and then.
Hold that thought.
My other question is, Lifeline currently provides us with four ambulances. Will they be at least that much?
Okay. So to go, I'm going to answer your first question, second. So Lifeline, what they do right now is they have four ambulances that provide emergency response care. There's, there's two stationed in Belvidere, where you guys seen, and then there's, there's two in Rockford. And what they do is when one of these ambulance leaves, one will come back in and backfill it. Here's the trick of this, those four ambulances, so what percent are ours, right? That's a good question. So of those four ambulances, Chief Kuntz at District Two has one of them in his station. That also covers District Two, Northside. The one that's south in ours will cover District Two South. So whatever, so it's two departments sharing four ambulances, but we're also sharing them with all the hospitals, because this is what these four ambulances also do. Every time Mrs. Smith goes from the nursing home to the hospital, or hospital, nursing home, hospital to home, all those non-emergency transports, one question is, how are they able to survive if it costs this much? Well, this is what they do in the meantime. They take these four ambulances, and they're going to take whatever they can get if they have a non-emergency transport, and they can get a few hundred dollars to transfer someone from the hospital to home, or home to the hospital, non-emergency, they're going to do that. So if you think of Rockford, Rockford has three hospitals in it, you know? Belvidere has one. If you think of all the nursing homes in Rockford, and then you think, Belvidere has one, and then Boone County has a major nursing home, too. So at any one time, if a transfer comes up, they're going to leave and take that. And so really, they're, they're not dedicated. They're not dedicated to any one person. So that was a real trick of this whole thing, to figure out how many ambulances do we need? Well, how many do we have now? Well, we.
Sean, isn't currently our contract, they provide two ambulances to the city of Belvidere. So this is apples to apples. Lifeline's only requires, we have two ambulances for the city of Belvidere, but what they do is, Sean says, when they get called out, they'll backfill. So they are taking other calls. We've had the benefit of effectively utilizing mutual aid with District Two, because they also had Lifeline. They only just, you know, trade out ambulances of who did what, and they did that on their own. But contractually speaking, it's apples to apples, two ambulances, two ambulances.
Well, contractually, we just, I don't mean to correct you, but they.
We dropped down to one at one point.
It's one.
Right.
It's one, but since it backfilled and we shared it with District Two, we, we never saw a gap in service.
So from like Swedes, Belvidere to Swedes, Rockford, they still provide that themselves?
Depends. So Swedes, Swedes, Belvidere contracts with Superior, and that would be like, that ambulance is sitting there, if you're going from here to here. Like, sometimes hospitals will contract. Obviously, OSF is going to use, was, was using OSF, right? But now that they're elite, they're unaffiliated with OSF, so now they're just really trying to provide that service any, anywhere they get. And so that's the, that's the downfall to that, is that if they're, we've had experiences where we've had no calls in Belvidere, and we're getting an ambulance from Rockford, right? That's the reason that happens, is because, you know, both got a transfer, or they're short-staffed that day. Their agreement says that 90% of the time, they'll respond in eight minutes, and they've, they've definitely done that. So I'm not saying that they haven't done that, but there's been definitely times where we have the first ambulance call of the day, and it's coming from Rockford, or they're asking District Three or Capren Rescue to come, but that is, is how they do that. So what percent of those four? Well, we, contractually, we have one, but really, we were getting, my estimate, two and a half. So the whole conversation that I've had this whole time, too, I've been working with Chief Kuntz, and that's why Chief Kuntz is, is here, because we know we share, I mean, we're in the center of District Two, and we know whatever we do, that we're going to need to, we're going to be, it's going to be better for the community if we work together. So I can't speak for him of what he's thinking. May Chief Kuntz talk?
Hi, Chief.
Thank you. Brian Kuntz with District Two. I just want to reiterate that the partnership that we have right now, just on the fireside, has been working tremendous. Neither one of us can work alone. So combining, and our future plan is to get two as well, so we're able to backfill each other. It won't be coming from Rockford, I mean, we'll have two, and if this happens with the city, they would have two, and there would be the four available. So I'm looking forward that this future for the community, not only the city, but the fire districts, is going to be working hand in hand together. So that's our, that's our goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Kuntz.
And then Alderman Freeman, to answer your question, this is the slide here. So what this slide is, is net costs, because in most of the RFPs, we would be offsetting our cost with revenue in some way, shape, or form. So you see the 1569 Metro Elite City Billing, Elite, Elite Building, and Northwest City Billing. So like I said, Elite's proposal, where they do the billing, their cost was the 119 per month, which came out to 1.433 million. So if you see that in that column, the reason that doesn't change is because they did a two-year agreement, and they said, if we do the subsidy and we just get the revenue as well, it's going to be 119 a month. So it'd be 1.433, 1.433. As you see, when you compare it with all the others, it's by far the most expensive, especially in year two, once that revenue starts coming in. So Elite City Billing, you see that? So, okay, well, they said, well, the other part of their proposal was, if you bill, we'll still charge the 119.4 a month, but we're going to want 5% of the revenue you collect. What didn't make sense to, to us is if you look at the difference, like, they're going to, like, year, year two, they'd get the 1.4 million, and then they'd only get like 55,000. The 5% would be like 55,000 instead of 850. It was, it was such a vast difference. It made myself and Attorney Drell and the mayor lose confidence in, in that bid. So we called them, and we said, you believe that 100% of what you collect in revenue is equal to 5% of what we collect, and you'd be happy with that? And they, they said, yeah, we think it's going to be about the same, which they thought, well, since we're billing as a municipality with the GMT money, that we will, we would get more. And the answer is, yes, we'll, we'll get a little more, not a lot, but a little, and you guys saw those estimates. So the Elite City Billing option is probably way less money than they are expecting to receive in revenue. If they're, if they're expecting 849,000, and they get 35,000 was the estimate for, for year one, very, very different. Are they going to be happy to be in Belvidere? I think they're, that 1.43 million is, is their absolute cost, maybe even like break-even or losing money, and then that 5% would, that would be a small amount of the, 5% of 649,000 would be a tiny amount, and that is not what they're expecting. So I haven't spoke much on Northwest. It's on the right-hand side. You'll see Northwest is the, the least costly option of them all. Northwest said, our proposal is 65,000 per ambulance, we'll do it for 130, 130 a month, and you guys keep the revenue. So, okay. One thing that we asked with Northwest, or we asked with our RFPs, is that we asked to please show us what salaries that you're going to pay, because we knew, one very important question, is are you going to be able to staff these ambulances? Do you have enough employees? Fire departments are having problems hiring people right now, ambulance companies are, you know? So one concern is, well, if you give us a low estimate, maybe you're not, and maybe you're not paying your employees a reasonable wage, and that would give us a good idea, like, hey, this would be a risk to go with this company, because they have an unrealistic number here, and now we're locked into this company, and we're trying, we're scrambling even more to try and get out, because they're not able to provide staffing. So we, we asked for that, and Northwest did not give us that in the RFP, and it was, it was clear, it said, you shall provide this, they did not. Another thing about Northwest, smaller company, they don't have the economies of scale for ambulances or employees, and they didn't turn an RFP in until Attorney Drella called them and said, hey, it's past, it's past due. Did you want to submit one? Oh, yeah, yeah, we do. I'll, I'll work on it this weekend.
We got it Sunday.
And we got it on Sunday. That was a Friday we got it on. That was a Friday we got on Sunday. They did, I appreciate them providing the proposal, but based on that experience and not seeing where their, what their cost drivers are, I can't confidently recommend them. And that's really how I feel about Elite because of the, such a large variation in price, I can't confidently recommend them. Then there's, there's Metro. There's Metro who was introduced to me by Chief Coontz. He helped North Park Fire set them up and utilize them. I asked Chief Holstrom, how's it going? It's good. He said, you know what? He goes, they've been 100% honest and transparent about everything. He said, anytime that there is any discrepancy, they made it right. Then I, you look at their references, they completed the RFP. It has everything we asked for and, and then some, you know, a lot of reading material. But if you look at all those departments that they work with, they're a growing company because their model that they have is working. They have the experience in the GMT, like setting that up. I don't. Attorney Drella does not yet. The billing companies ultimately will set that up, but there's some logistical things. These guys have been there, done that. Elite and Northwest, that's, they haven't done that before. They haven't worked under someone else's license. So I'd hate to, to do something and if something's not done properly or not filed properly or we're not truly the provider for some reason or not, we're going to, I feel very comfortable with Metro. So you combine all those things in, yeah, they are less than the Elite if they bill by a lot. They are more than Northwest. But in my mind, I know their margin's low and Northwest's margin is at least seven and a half percent. So the only thing that you can lower is reduce wages. And if wages are lower, it's going to be hard to get staffing. The other thing that I feel like it's important too, is that these are the people caring for our, our citizens and we want to make sure that it's people, that it's not a revolving door, that it's people that stay here, know the community. With a company like Metro, we get to work with them and negotiate what their salary is, what their benefits are. We, we get to work with them and then they just, we come up with that formula and they say, okay, our margin's seven and a half percent. Here's what it costs. So we can do the things we need as a community quickly to make sure that we're, we have, if we have a big turnover problem, which I, I don't think we are, we're fortunate in Boone County that the people that work 911 want to work in Boone County. They want to work in Belvidere. We're very fortunate for that. So I think no matter who we choose, no matter who you guys choose, they're going to get those good paramedics and good basics. So yeah, factoring all, all those in, you see our actual five-year cost. I know in the motion, it says $8 million, but honestly, it's going to be offset by revenue and offset by reimbursement. And so this is a much better estimate of what that five-year total will be. But you see, no matter what we do, that first year FY '24 is around a million dollars. Obviously, it's money that's not budgeted for. We're going to work with our wonderful finance director to see where that money's going to come from and how to budget it properly and things like that. Because the other option is, as Director Anderson said, you could always do nothing. And what does that look like? Doing nothing looks like you call 911 and you hope that a private ambulance is not doing a transport from here to here and the highest density of, of ambulances is Rockford because there's three hospitals in Rockford, many more nursing homes. It's more than likely they're coming from Rockford. And hopefully, they're on this side of the Rockford. So that's what not doing anything means. It means that, that you're not, you're going to call 911 and, and, God bless you. And, and I'm not saying that to scare anybody, that, that would be a factor. We have one hospital in Belvidere and it's not even like overnight. And two, two, two nursing homes, there's not going to be a big pool of private companies just hanging out in Boone County. There might be one, there might be two. You might get lucky when you call 911. But that's something that I feel is an obligation that we have to make sure that if someone calls 911, that they can, they can get emergency transport at, at a reasonable expectancy. Like you can't staff for six calls in 90 minutes. Nobody can. But if you got, if you got two in 90 minutes, that happens quite a bit. We should, it happens tw- you know, all the time. So we should be able to staff for that. This, we, we talked about a, a lot of this already. The only thing that I would like to point out that I have not said yet is that Metro has a sister company, Paramedic Billing Services, that could do the billing. The going rate for billing these days is 5%. If you, if you have, if Metro does it, they would do it for 4%, so you'd save a percent on that. Assistance guidance with GMT. I, I don't know if Elite could help us or Northwest, but I, I definitely know that Metro could. I think the length of agreement is good, five years. I mean, two years is, is really short. We'd be back at this next year, right? And then to even set anything up, like I said, even if we wanted to do something different, it's really a three-year process. So five years, whatever we do, if it's a five-year agreement, I would recommend that. It will give us time, get our, get our revenue. We'd have one year of that first year and then four years of, of good revenue numbers with the GMT funding. We'd have a, a clear picture of what we want to do next time. All right. So I already touched on this, but the Metro and 1569, those employees would operate under the rules and regulations of the fire department. With Metro, they'd be contracted employees that are assigned with, with my approval. So a, a for-profit company, they're, what they need to do is obviously they want to do a good job, otherwise their doors would shut. But their number one goal at the end of the day to keep the doors open is, are, are we able to, to drive revenue, right? And so how do you drive revenue? If you've got a fixed contract cost, you lower your inputs. How do you lower your inputs? It's lower your staffing cost. My desire, especially as a community member, is if I call 911, I would want someone to respond to my house quickly and I'd want them to be good, good at what they do. And that's a, a reasonable expectation. So when they are hiring, their objectives might be different than, than, than our objectives, our community objectives. The nice thing is, is through the assignment of their staff is that we have say in that. And I, I believe that's a benefit and I believe that's worth the price difference between Northwest and Metro. If we were to go internally, we would have exposure beyond the cost that are unknowns, PSEBA, PETA and disability, those are just acronyms for if people get hurt on the job, it costs a lot of money. All right? So, and I'm not talking thousands, I'm not talking hundreds, thousands. It's, it's, could potentially be more than that. We talked about the rest of that. We covered a lot of this and it's all in, all in your handout. So I don't want to go any longer than we have to. Your Honor?
Thank you. Alderman Freeman?
Thank you again. So the last sentence in your memo is, city staff shall negotiate the final paramedic service agreement. Is there room for negotiation in any of this? Are you guys negotiating or is this just what it is?
So, great question. It's non-negotiation. The, the final part of the RFP there is that we would sit down and how they present, they present a spreadsheet and they say, here's the input costs. How much of the healthcare do you want to cover? Do you want to offer a 401K match? Do you want to, right, it's really how you want it set up. And so there's not really a negotiation because their fee is that set 7.5%. But it's really ironing out. Because in honesty, the first time I talked with them, it was like 1.45 million. And then, then they presented a slightly different package and it was 1.5 million, I think is the one they presented to us. And then this one at 1.6. So really, we're going to sit down before council and, and iron out and get a specific exact number and that is going to be this. So that's what that means. We're not per se negotiating. We got to basically, if that's the, the direction, and I recommend that be the direction you guys go, but if that is the direction you guys go, we'll sit down with them and iron out those details and it'll be a, a number, a fixed sum for council.
That discussion is clarifying contract language. Exactly what's the indemnity language going to look like? Exactly what is the response time kind of language going to look like? Those kinds of things. What the chief was getting into is they quoted us a number with what they think we would need to be competitive in the job market to have paramedic staff or, or department. Metro is the employer, not the city of Belvidere. We would not be provided 401K. We would not be providing any of the benefits. But if we want Metro to offer those benefits, that's built into the cost structure that they charge us. They're built into what was proposed, but frankly, if we wanted, if we thought we was going to have a hard time finding paramedics and we thought that they should pay more or have better benefits, that would drive the price up a little bit. But obviously, none of that would happen without council approval, so.
Alderman Snow?
So in the aspect with the Metro, when you talk about them staffing for us, these ambulance and stuff, if there's, back in the term of personality conflict with one of, one or more of the guys, you guys can step in and say, hey, we really don't like John here. Can we get a replacement? Is that what we're talking?
Absolutely. It would be just as easy to unassign someone. And, and I, they're not our employees, so they don't discipline in those, those things they, they handle, but they would handle at our direction. It would basically be a phone call. And if it got to the point where it wasn't working out with someone, they would just, I would like a different option. I'd like this employee unassigned. And so that, that is another benefit, the easy of assignment and, and unassignment because they're still, they're still their employee. So maybe that person didn't work out for us, but they can plug them somewhere else in their company, you know? So that, that movement happens like that.
Chief?
I was just seeing if there's anything I didn't cover. All right. Thank you guys for all of that again. The, after considering everything and, and putting it all together, myself and, oh.
Alderman Porter?
Just one quick question. I just want to clarify that. So some of this money that we're paying, paying them, we're, we're actually subsidizing people who ride the ambulance who don't have insurance or don't have enough insurance to cover. We're actually, our taxpayers are actually covering part of that fee.
True. The ambulance by itself would not be able to survive and, and get enough revenue. It's not that they, it's the, the community is basically subsidizing to have the availability to have them, to have them here. So yes and no. I know that's a really unclear, clear answer, but really what we're subsidizing is that they're here and they're ready to provide that service. I mean, what they collect based on that, I mean, if everybody had private insurance in Belvidere, our cost would not be a million dollars. Because instead of receiving on average, what I estimate about $600 per call, we'd receive $1,100 per call. And then that would lower our, our needed subsidy. So, and that's where the GMT money comes because the federal government recognized the cost to provide ambulance service is more than $383 per transport. So they said, well, we're going to supplement that and we're also going to help the state since the state's paying Medicaid. But I want to say, I would say what, what we're doing in, in District Two is going to have to do the same thing. They're going to, their costs are, we, we've been, like I said, very, very fortunate that Lifeline has provided this for us and District Two. But unfortunately, we're going to have to subsidize it to make sure that there's an avail, there's ambulances available when people call 911. And it, and will we still need ambulances from Rockford? Will we still need District Three? Will we still need Capron Rescue? Yes, absolutely. I mean, we've, we could have one rec and two EMS calls, take all five ambulances in the county, you know, that, and then have more happen. And it does happen, but you can't, you can't staff. And I, I wouldn't want to say that we're subsidizing, basically we're, people are, to have that service here and available. It does not self, it's not self-sufficient. So we're not, but it is very true. If you have no insurance, on average, they'd receive about $83. If you have Medicare, it was around 400. If you have Medicaid, it's around 383. If you have private insurance, around 1,100. So it's not that you're subsidy, subsidizing, but it's really about your paramex in your community and there's really not, not a whole lot you can do about it. It kind of is what it is.
All right. Chief, anything else?
That's all I have. Alls I was going to read is the, the motion. I'm recommending the following motion. Motion to forward to city council a five-year agreement with Metro Paramedic Services to provide ambulance services outlined in the January 20, January 4th, 2023 proposal at approximate annual cost of $1,659,733 per year and a total cost not to exceed 8.298 665 million for the term of the five-year agreement. City staff shall negotiate the final paramedic service agreement for final approval of the city council. I'd make that recommendation. And if there's no more questions, I, I will turn my mic off and sit down so we can move on.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief.
All right.
You know, this, as the council fully understands, we were in a unique position. We had, you know, Lifeline provide a service that obviously became unaffordable to them. They operated at a deficit for a number of years, is my understanding. Also, in answer to the question, Chief, you had brought up at the time that we did provide it during Alderman Stevens, when he was a firefighter. I was actually on the council then, whenever that question came before the council. It's my recollection, there was around 700 calls for service at that time, 29 years ago. And of course, that's changed significantly. And you pointed out that at that time, we had two hospitals and we didn't have anywhere near the number of calls. I think Alderman Porter brings up an interesting point about subsidy. That's exactly what we're doing here is we're going to subsidize a service for our citizens here. Anybody who calls 911 who is in need, you know, a couple of ways we can do it. You're looking at three RFPs and one in-house estimate as to what those numbers may look like. The chief didn't pan out the tenure for the, what they would be in-house, but believe me, they changed dramatically regarding affordability and how much that would be if we were to provide it in-house. Simply because of the number of staff that we have to hire and then also the contracts and the pay steps that are associated with them. So what we tried to do was make sure that we got three competitive bids. One of them was a two-year bid. It didn't even satisfy the five-year that we'd asked for. And it also kind of left short some of the incidentals that was with it that was kind of undefined. I don't think their explanation, as the chief had touched on, was probably reasonable. I didn't believe it. I was very skeptical, but they were not able to prove otherwise and they didn't. So the contract from Elite was a two-year contract. So when I look at this, you know, for all the reasons that the chief said, you have a company that is, is more money. However, they also have the ability to, to bill. They have a break on the billing. They have familiarity or experience with GMT. They also have a number of employees. And to summarize it, if we're going to pay for a service, we want to make sure, A, that we're not coming back later because we have a service that doesn't satisfy public safety. And I think that's important. We're going to, regardless of how you look at it, we're going to pay out a tremendous amount of money regard, in order to be able to do this service. We were fortunate. We were very lucky. And Lifeline just, they realized that they can't do it and unfortunately, neither can we. He'd mentioned that, you know, our finance director, we have come up with ways when you looked at the first year, it's going to be the costliest on the, the proposals, any way you look at it, whoever you go with. But I think we're going to, I know we're going to be able to do it. And eventually, as this gets going, our expenses are going to be a lot less than that first year. So I appreciate again Chief Shadle for doing all the hard work here. I know that his interest and mine and yours, I know, is to provide- I know that his interest, and mine, and yours, I know, is to provide service. You know, I think somebody had brought up the fact, well, let's not, we, we won't do anything. I think that's a terrible offer, and I don't think that's one that probably is in my cards. But no offense to anybody who recommended it, it is realistic. We don't have to do anything. You're right. But I've seen in the past, whenever you have a service here that doesn't satisfy somebody in need, especially in a public safety in need, and it isn't pretty, and I think we can do, I believe we can do this, so. Okay. We have a motion then to forward, in a second, to forward to the City Council a five-year agreement with Metro Paramedic Services, Inc., to provide ambulance services as outlined in the January 4th, 2023 proposal, at an approximate annual cost of $1,659,733 per year, and a total not, a total cost not to exceed $8,298,665 for the term of the five-year agreement. The city, city staff shall negotiate the final paramedic service agreement for final approval of the City Council. That's the motion that we have on the floor, and it is open for discussion. If there's anything we didn't cover, any questions that we have that was not answered, please feel free to ask them. I think, I think we can, we can answer them, but we will answer them. And so Alderman Snow?
For clarity in the verbiage of the motion, the part where it talks about it's an approximate cost of 1.6, and then it says a cost not to exceed, kind of, kind of an odd deal. Is there a different verbiage we should substitute for that not to exceed?
That was the language the chief requested, so that's what he put in his memo. I don't know the...
Because obviously, with the negotiations that may occur, that may fluctuate up and down. That, that was my only...
I frankly would not have put that not to exceed at the maximum number in there, but the chief thought it was important.
I think the, Chief, go ahead.
Alderman Snow, I would definitely yield to Attorney Drella. One reason why I wanted that five-year cost in there is so you guys could, could see over the, over the term what we were, were speaking about. I just wanted to be fully transparent. I, I think the wording, maybe Attorney Drella, if you would want to amend or change that...
That's been made.
Or if they, you would suggest something to amend that motion, but if, if not, I just...
I don't know that's necessary at this point, because it'll come back as a resolution with the agreement attached, and the council connect at that point. It's not like a first of reading or something like that where it's a council already. So I'm not particularly worried from a procedural standpoint on that issue. We know what the number is going to be with a fair amount of certainty, again. If we start playing with the assumptions that Metro made in drafting the proposal, yes, that would change the numbers, up or down, frankly. But the proposal was the proposal.
The proposals, Alderman Snow and City Council, that we had, that this language is drafted upon was, we're, we pretty much know that the cost, we know that the cost will not exceed eight, eight million 298,000. And, and so, you know, in order to give it some clarity per year, I think that was just divided per year. Those costs may be less and more throughout the years, but as I understand it, the total not to exceed cost over the five-year agreement will fall within that motion. It may be a little bit, it may change a little bit, but it was my understanding, it would be, it would be pretty much there, so.
Just want to clarify.
But, no, that, that's a good question, and I think the city attorney had referenced that, and I could see the merit with Chief Shadle wanting to take and extrapolate the cost per year and extrapolate that out to the five-year contract of this agreement, so five-year term of this contract of agreement, so. There's no fuzzy math, but I appreciate the question. Thank you. Anything else, anybody? Alderman Stevens?
At some point, I'd much rather see our employees provide the ambulance service, because as the point was made 29 years ago, the city firemen can't say, you know, we don't want to do this anymore. As, you know, we got lucky with Lifeline, and it lasted all these years, but with our own employees, they can't pick up and leave. So in the future, I'd sure much rather see us head towards the, of our own employees doing it.
You know, Alderman Stevens, I think when I looked at these numbers, you know, we have to be able to provide service, and I don't disagree with you. I, back in 1993, I had voted to have our fire department provide that service, so I know what my wish list would be, but I also realize that we have to live within the financial restrictions, budget restrictions that we, we have, and it, and it has caught us off guard. As the chief had said, we're not prepared to do that now, and I know you understand that. And down the road, that, that decision may change. That's why it's a five-year contract. But for all the reasons that we kind of got caught off guard, I had no idea. I wish this was, would have waited for a couple more years or, or three years perhaps, but it, it hasn't, and we have to face this on the 23rd, on the 30th of April, 2023, and we want our city to have service, and the chief, along with his recommendation, with my approval, and I support that, I think that's the, I think that's the best one that we have going for us right now. Alderman Freeman, thank you.
Thank you. So how much were we budgeting for Lifeline in the, in the past?
Zero.
They didn't charge us anything?
No.
No. That's the, that was the tough part about it, is that we, for a number of years, we had as good of a deal as we could possibly get, but, you know, nothing is free, and I think whenever they decided that the real costs outweigh their ability to provide the service, then I, I, we have a full understanding of what that means, and we have it in front of us here tonight, so.
In the mid-2000s, last time, we went up to a true RFP for ambulance services. Lifeline won that contract. They proposed, they actually, the agreement has them billing it, reasonable and customary, approximate Medicare/Medicaid rates, but it, it's not quite that rate. They can go higher than that. With no subsidy from the city. And I remember sitting down with an ambulance company that's no longer in business, at least, I don't think they're around, and they had proposed at that time a subsidy, I think it was about a quarter million dollars a year, with them keeping all the receipts, might have been higher than that. And he looked at me and said, Lifeline will take losses on this contract, and this is a loss leader to get patients into OSF St. Anthony's ER. And actually, that's what led to a lot of disagreements back in the day. When I say disagreements, concerns raised by other hospitals, because they were worried about steering. And so that contract had built into reporting requirements, where they had to show us where they're taking all their patients on each call. Obviously, we dacted HIP information, but we could see where all the calls were going so we could make sure there was no steering. But effectively, OSF Lifeline lost money every single year for the last 15 years or so, providing that service to the city of Belvidere.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there anything we missed? Any other discussion? Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer yes. Any opposed? No. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Brearton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Braither?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed.
And Mr. Mayor, just so the council's aware...
Thank you.
If we can, we'll try and have something back to you two weeks from today for action, although I can't guarantee that, because I know the city clerk is going to be gone for a while, as well as, I don't blame you, but as well as the, the primary person from Metro is out of the country as well. I'm not sure when he, he'll be back Thursday. So we'll try and get something back by, in two weeks, but if not, it may be the City Council following that.
So we have item three, finance and personnel unfinished business. We have none. Item four, finance and personnel, new business. Finance department update. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you. I have no updates at this time. Instead, if you can give us just a minute to switch computers, we will go ahead and begin the review, budget review process by turning, in, turning the mic over to Chief Shadle for presentation of the fire department budget.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Sit next to you, Kim.
Absolutely. Thank you.
No, this is a... What's that?
Whatever you would like.
What if Shannon wants to talk?
I have to go.
All right. Chief?
All right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right. I just wanted to start the budget presentation off by showing you guys the current structure of our department. We operate on three 24-hour shifts, and each shift has nine members, seven firefighters, a lieutenant, and a captain. Our mission statement there is on the bottom, and I already spoke on that in the other presentation, so we'll go ahead and switch to the next slide. So obviously, our objective is carrying into 2024 is to continue our mission to provide emergency rescue and fire protection services that exceed expectations and to be there for the community at the greatest time of need, ensure quality emergency medical transportation, continue robust daily training. One thing you guys will see in the, the budget is to add the inspection capacity to ensure code compliance. As always, be physically responsible, fiscally responsible. The department is running absolutely as, as lean as it is. It's running with two, three-man engine companies. There really are no extra expenses. There's no, no things in the budget that are, are not needs. I know that was the mayor and Shannon's clear message to myself when preparing this budget, is that there's not going to be, he actually said, sharpen your pencil. And so, so I did the best I could. A lot of the planning and the data, it's really just costs, and I just saw what they were historically or estimated based on, you know, the past six months, and looked at contracts for hose testing and all, everything else. We're going to go through that. Thank you, Shannon. Next one? All right. So this is something that I did. If you want a copy of this, I can, I can forward it. Maybe I'll email it to you guys. I don't want to take the time to go over it all, but anytime that you're looking at a new year and a new budget, you, you know, I ask myself, where are we? Where are we now? What's our strengths? What are our weaknesses? What are some things that we have going for us externally, and what are some things that are challenging? And you guys would recognize all this. What I'll do is I'll, I'll complete an email, and I'll email this out to you guys, just to be reasonable on, on time today. So overall, in the summary, one thing that I wanted to point out is that we're 4.18% over budget from, not over budget, but increase over last year's plan. I think that's very reasonable, considering the costs and the union contracts that we, the contracts we negotiated, and I believe that to be very reasonable. So salaries, thankfully Shannon does this. One thing I wanted to point out about the salaries is that in the past, the shifts have been nine, nine, and 10. I did not replace the position when Chief Heiser retired, and the reason I did not do that is because we have a need for a full-time inspector. And so what is figured into this budget is nine, nine, and nine, three shifts of nine, and then a full-time inspector. And Shannon thankfully figured out the actual cost on all of these. Shannon, will you go back real quick? I just wanted to touch on it, since it's brand new. The reason why we need a full-time inspector is, right now, there's 607 buildings that need to be annually inspected. Of those, we, we do the, the multifamilies, 140 of the 600, we do those on company level inspections. The rest are not done. There's, there's that Bricer compliance engine that you guys approved and know about, that just checks on sprinklers, alarms, hood suppression, exhaust. They just submitted, it's all done by the contractors, and, but people are not actually physically going into the buildings. They're not seeing them. So any unpermitted alterations, we're not contacting the ownership, any occupancy changes. I mean, maybe they changed what they do inside and didn't, didn't pull a permit. We'd have no idea. Maybe their fire alarm doors or their fire escape is barricaded. We have no idea until you come, come in there. Maybe they had an unlicensed electrician come in and put, do this or that, until you actually get your eyes on a building. So there's, there's a lot that we're unable to do right now. The inspectors do that on overtime, but really what they're able to keep up with is new construction and then any glaring deficiencies. So even the Bricer deficiencies, right now, there's 77 deficiencies outstanding. This new inspector, what they'll be able to do is actually in person, get their eyes on the building and, and check those things and more to do an actual, a true inspection. I thought that having a shift with heavy staff, although nice, was, I felt like this was more important use of those funds. And so with this full-time inspector, it would be, like, there's, there's no pension. It's, it's not within the fire department, so it's, it'd be a city employee basically assigned to the fire department that would be a full-time inspector. So let's roll it into that. Thank you. All right. Overtime. What I want to point out about this is it looks like a huge increase, but the actual for 2022, as you see, is 221,000. I did an average of the last nine years, and it was 200,000 is our actual expense. Shift coverage alone in physical year 2022 was 112,000. We've had an unfortunate year with injuries. We've had four current long-term injuries. We're projected to hit shift coverage of 133,000 this year. So I estimated a plan of 24 in between that at 115,000. The other thing is that the budget last year was reduced 48,000 in overtime in anticipation of hiring 10, 10, and 10, having the 10-man shifts, which would reduce overtime. That 48,000 was never added back, so that number is, is low. If you guys look at your monthly reports, our overtime budget is, we're already over 100% of that, and I apologize for that. If there's anything I could do about that, I, I would. I recently, not even recently, a few months back, I said, hey, any outside training? We can't do it. Any, we, we just put, we shut down all discretionary overtime early on because we were so far over budget. But I believe 218,000 is a reasonable estimate for that, and do you have any questions on that? Because this is one that is kind of a larger item, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to...
Alderman Snow?
And this is off the wall, but are the medical, are they job-related or knee injuries from doing something else or long-term stuff?
So of the long-term stuff of the four, three of the four were job-related.
Okay.
We, we had a torn Achilles. We had two, two knee injuries, and the, the other one was not job-related.
And out of curiosity, is there, anytime there, you guys are responding, I don't know what the incidence would be... all, everything, and they get hurt during that, but obviously, sometimes during a car accident, there's somebody that's negligent at that scene. Do we ever have the ability to, and it's probably, don't walk out, Mr. Droll.
Yeah.
This is a question for you. Say the, say the Fire Department responds to an accident, seeing that somebody is liable for, the, and somebody gets injured at the, by the Fire Department on the job doing the extrication or whatever it is, do we have the ability to sue that person that was liable for the accident to recoup any of that? Just throwing that out there.
Any subrogation of that nature is handled by our workers' comp carrier in those situations. It may happen occasionally, but it's all handled by them, so we're not actually involved in it.
So I do know that there's a statute within the, I don't know the name of it, but if a firefighter is injured in fighting a fire at a property and it's arson, that there's, there's nothing you can do to recoup that. That is just, it's, it's a risk that you take when, when you're firefighting, but I don't know if that rolls over to car accidents, so.
I was just curious.
But I know that, so what, some, as a discussion, a small budgetary item in the future, we'd be able to do auto-recovery billing. So what that would do is like, there's a small amount that you're able to charge car insurance for responding to accidents, and a lot of departments have already started doing that. And there's also fire insurance recovery. Most policies have like a 250 or $500 just written in. It's just money that's hanging out there that we're not, doesn't increase taxes or their rates or anything like that. It's just money, but stuff that will happen in, in the future that I'll probably bring forward at a, at a later date.
And on that same note, having gone to a bunch of fire district meetings, it sounds like they actually, if it's, if they respond to an incident in their jurisdiction and it's a non-resident, they do some kind of billing. I'm just tossing that out.
Yep. It's really up to your, your guys' discretion.
Just throwing that out there as a possibility of...
There's communities that do that.
Yep. It's really your discretion. If you create the ordinance that you guys say, I want to bill anybody that's a non-resident, or hey, I just, we'll just, we'll just collect that low-hanging fruit from the insurance companies. It's all, will be your option. Not this year, but at a later date, I'll, I'll bring that to you guys, so.
I'm sorry to hear, but there's communities on ambulance billing where they don't charge the local residents once they recover from the third-party payer, but they will go after and chase down non-residents. It becomes a little bit of a quagmire for the billing company and the city and figure out who's who, but there's communities that do that.
Just tossing that out.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay.
Chief?
All right, the next one, fire pension, that's done. Want to thank you guys for contributing to the pension at 100% of the actuarial's request, I think, for the past seven years. I know that, what, what that does for the taxpayer is it does decrease their overall burden over time. So it is a good idea. I know it's hard to do, and I know it is, is what it is, but again, these numbers have come from the actuaries, so I wouldn't anticipate any questions on this or the health insurance or the dental insurance. Uniform allowance, it kind of is what it is. It's set by the bargaining agreement. The only thing that we have rolled into here is I added $300 for the inspector to have some department, some type of department polos or uniform, whatever, whatever is best. Training, again, this is outside training. Some of this is required for relicenter of certain things like our investigators, our It's a reasonable increase. The other thing I would real quickly mention is that I want to thank all the department members that assisted, but what I did, like Travis Tangi, for example, he's the training coordinator, and I asked him, I said, hey Travis, what do you anticipate our expenses next year? What would you like them to be? And he said, well, I'd like this much. I said, all right, well, I'm gonna cut this much from it, and we'll, but, well, this is what it'll be. So, but they did get, I, these are all true costs, actual estimates. There's, none of these numbers, I want you guys to know, are just pulled out of the air, pulled out of a hat, or just like, oh, we're gonna do 3% of next year. It's actually behind a lot of these, there's spreadsheets, and that's what these totals came out to. So I just wanted to point that out to you. Repair and maintenance of buildings. One thing that I'm gonna say that is an added cost that would normally not be in here. We have six inoperable windows at Station 1, so we do have money set aside of this for that. I moved the window sill, that 15,000, that was, was in the budget this year. It didn't get done this year because our air conditioner broke, but I moved it actually out. I said, Lieutenant Drawl, who takes care of the building, I said, hey, we gotta push this out, because you guys are gonna see something in capital that we, as OSHA mandated that we gotta take care of right away. So anything that, I said, hey, we gotta, you know, we got the ambulance coming this year. We need, anything that we can just give a little breathing room, we did that, and we did that throughout the budget and throughout all these conversations. So maintenance, the largest part of this actually is like the hose testing and ladder testinating, testing. If you guys remember, last year, OSHA came in and said, no, you guys will test your hose every single year. It's not an option, so we're gonna do that, because we like to follow the law. And that itself, the hose and ladder testing of that 11-5 is $6,000, air compressor annual test. Actually, almost, a lot of this is just mandated, mandated annual testing, and then a little bit of breathing room if something breaks. Repair, maintenance, vehicles. So this is like the most variable category in all of this, other than overtime, second most variable. The five-year average of this was 38,000. The 10-year average was 47,000. The 15-year average was 48,000. So as you know, we had a really aging fleet the last five years, and that was the lowest average, so who knows? So it's, it's pretty random what breaks. Like, for example, we brought our ladder in for its annual test, and there was a $12,000 worth of needed repairs, and our ladder truck is a, you know, 11-5. So I, I have full confidence that this 49,000, even though it's a little less, it will cover anything that comes our way next year, especially with the new engine coming in March. Telephone utilities, again, they kind of are what they are. We got phone bills, that includes the internet service, it includes the Starcom radio service, it includes the cellular service for the tablets on the vehicles and the shift commander's phone, my phone, and the lieutenant's phone. Physicals, this is a fairly low amount. The only thing that would get billed to this is if someone turns in their $10 receipt for reimbursement when they do their annual physical. They use, utilize their own insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield to, to do annual physical, and we reimburse the copay. The other variable thing that would come out of this is, say that we have a discrepancy with an injury and we need to send a firefighter to our own doctor. If you'll see some of the years in the past that were larger, I know in '22, that was included in there. A firefighter was sent to a doctor of our, our choice, and that, sometimes we do that just for clarification. And so that would come out of here, but as you see, most years, a thousand bucks definitely covers it. Fire prevention and education, so the bulk of this is our material for our No Second Grade Left Behind program, where we meet with all the second graders and we teach them fire safety. I would want to quickly say that in 2017, we had the Jackson Street Fire, and there was a third grader who was rescued from that building, and that third grader told her family, said, who, when she was a second grader, she went through the smoke trailer. And she said, you know, I wasn't scared because I knew what to do. I knew how to stay low. And so I, I know it does make a difference. We also make sure all the parents check their smoke detectors and give them a little reward for doing that, so. And that's where, where this money goes to is, is that. And then we need to buy a new banner for Across State Street this year, because the other one, finally, all the grommets have broken, so. Emergency medical services, this is just those usable supplies. These are things like gloves. This also includes maintenance and testing of our EKG machines. We have two of those that are tested on an annual basis in our AED machines. This covers all that, and then specifically licensed renewals for our, our paramedics. Office supplies, you see that big jump that happened from '22 to '23, from '21, actually. So what that was is Firehouse used to be less than $2,000 a year. It was a, a software program that we owned. Now everything is cloud-based, and it's extremely expensive, and so that alone is 15,000 for first due for next year. Records management in total of this is 22,800. Software licensing is 1,300, and then IT told us we have about $2,500 worth of equipment that we need to replace, so that's what that total is there. Gas and oil, it should actually be a little bit less than that. That's the six-month total doubled, right? Of what we spent in the last six months, gas prices are going down. Again, super variable, 100% depends on gas prices, and I would anticipate that gas prices should remain where they are, still go down, so that should adequately handle that. Operating supplies, so these are the general usable supplies within the department. The average, the five- or six-year average is about $10,000. We took our six-month, if we, what we expended in the past six months and doubled it, it was 10,800. I'm estimating it at 9,900. I think that should be sufficient for us. Miscellaneous expense, Director Hanson says miscellaneous expenses are bad. So I was trying to get, be in good favor with her, and I made this zero.
We have wiring.
Oh, I'm sorry, chief. I, I wouldn't have done that if I would have known.
Apparently, that's just a Fire Department rule.
So equipment, equipment, this line item is, is jumping up, and but the reason being that it's jumping up is turnout gear has a, an expected life of 10 years, and then it's replaced or any damaged turnout gear. We just, I had the guys check all their gear, make sure it was within dates and preparation for budget, and we found that some of it needs to replace, be replaced. We also budgeted for turnout gear for potentially up to two retirees, so two new hires. And so you add all that together, turnout gear by itself, 19,470. We need a couple SCBA masks and then some incidentals shared with 2% of 10,000, which is, if you guys remember, anytime that, 2% is the, it's a board of members of the department set by state statute that the fire chief gets to be a part of, and so, but they spend money, and they're, the statute says it's for department needs. And so that's really anything for the, for the benefit of the department. So oftentimes, if I can get the guys to agree on some needed equipment, we, we can kind of double our money. So that's, that $10,000 is something that I want to point out there. So that's where that 32,470 came from. All right, capital expenses, no surprises at the top as far as vehicles. This is the payment for the new engine. The portable radio grant, that is that cost share if the grant is approved. If the grant is not approved, we do need a few more radios, and then our radio coordinator, Adam Elwinger, will be extremely happy, because then he can distribute radios to individuals again. So if the grant is not received, then I estimate about $7,000 cost to get at least two more Moving down to infrastructure, so this is, other than that sill repair, this is all news to me as well. All right, so OSHA came in, and we had budgeted this year to redo the sta, the floor at Station 2 out of the capital fund, and we didn't do it. There wasn't enough money allocated for that, and the reason it wasn't is because Station 2's floor drain, which runs the entire length of both bays, is so uneven and cracked that it just needs to be cut out of there and redone. And so there wasn't enough money to do it. So I forewent that, and we did get one bid. If it comes, when, when May comes, I would get more than one bid for you guys to decide, obviously, but that one bid we got back was 31,715 to fix that floor drain. And that's not digging up the other stuff. It's literally just cutting the floor drain out of both sides, because like I said, it runs the full length of Station 2, and then replacing, reforming it and replacing the grates. So that came about, because when Dan told me that, I said, no. You know, with the ambulance and everything. Well, OSHA came, and we had a, we, we asked them to come to, to give us, because OSHA's much friendlier if you ask them to come and they tell you stuff, than if they come and then they find the stuff. So we had some uneven apparatus at Station 1. Any cracks that are trip hazards greater than one-half inch, they can, they can fine us for. And so Lieutenant Drawl showed me at Station 2, he said, chief, you know, and then there's some, a couple holes in that, and so I'm like, well, we have to do our best to see if we can't get that replaced right away. So number one, so nobody doesn't get injured. Also, number two, to maintain compliance with OSHA. And so the apron, which is the front of the fire station at Station 2, I could show you guys pictures, but it is just extremely cracked every time the trucks drive on it. It, it looks like a wave. There's gaps much larger than that half-inch, something that, that couldn't wait. He was concerned with Station 1. Station 2 is, is just as bad. Station 1, I think it's, we can, we can go to next year just to separate it, but the Station 2 apron repair, again, that was one bid. It might have been two, but that was the cost, and again, with that dollar amount, I'd bring to you guys at least, I'd attempt for three bids and see what I could do to bring that to you guys. So those are both in 2024. Those are both, we'd try and get done as soon as, soon as the budget's approved. Apron repair for, apron repair for Station 1, moving that out to 25, and then Station 2, the floor surface, moving that out also to 25. And then you guys will see the Station 1 sill repair. They're not falling off, they're not gonna hit anybody in the head, but they definitely need to be repaired. It was on, like I said, it was in the capital fund for this year, but we ended up buying a new air conditioner instead. So I have that out to 2026, and that completes the Fire Department budget. I appreciate you guys' attention. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Shadle? I know I had a comment, you know, the repairs that you're talking about, that the stations certainly, they don't look too bad compared to the fact that there was gonna be a proposal at one time to purchase property downtown buildings and then put a investment, you know, at over $4 million for potential new station. So I think if you keep that into, keep, or if you compare that with potentially, we have an older building, but these maintenance costs are certainly, when you put it into perspective, certainly a lot less than even the initial investment on property that we would have had downtown potentially, and we wouldn't have been able to do anything with it, really. We would have looked at improvements anyhow, so. I understand. Anybody have any questions? All right. Seen none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Shadle. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. I didn't talk for like two months, but I definitely made up for it today.
Well, thank you, and thank you for, again, for all your help with the ambulance. It was really, really...
And that completes the fire department budget. I appreciate you guys' attention. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Shadle? I know I had a comment, you know, the repairs that you're talking about, the stations certainly, they don't look too bad compared to the fact that there was going to be a proposal at one time to purchase property downtown buildings and then put a investment, you know, at over $4 million for potential new stations. So I think if you keep that into, keep, or if you compare that with potentially, we have an older building, but these maintenance costs are certainly, when you put it into perspective, certainly a lot less than even the initial investment on property that we would have had downtown potentially. And we wouldn't have been able to do anything with it, really. We would have looked at improvements anyhow. So I understand. Anybody have any questions? All right. Seen none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Shadle. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. I didn't talk for like two months, but I definitely made up for it today.
Well, thank you and thank you for, again, for all your help with the ambulance. It was really, really a big relief that I knew that I had you get some of these figures, contact some of the surrounding departments, also help write up the RFP and bring it in in a timely manner. So thank you again. Appreciate it. Right. Chief Woody.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay? The Fire Department has a really expensive budget this year, apparently. So starting on page one for the Police Department, you'll notice that overall there's a 3.53% increase over last year. But if you look at everything but personnel and benefits, it's actually a 5% decrease from the previous year. So the Personnel and Benefit Obligations are contractual and not a whole lot of discretion within those expenditures. Page Two, Salaries, again contractual. Page Three, Overtime. Overtime, there's a, just over a $15,000 increase from the previous year, increasing the budget 43 point, 43.03%. That is primarily due to the mandated training through the Safety Act. The Safety Act requires that each officer has 30 hours of training over three years in use of force and scenario-based training. So we estimated about 25 of our officers are going to qualify for that training every year. So you divide that by three, so you get about 10 hours of training for every officer. By contract, any mandatory training can be put in for overtime. So we estimated that approximately $15,000. Now understand, that is going to be a fluctuating number because we may have officers that put in for more training in one given year or less training. So over a three-year period, that number could be an unknown variable. But this is a projection of about $15,000 after those three years. We could get a, you know, an estimate or kind of a percentage-based idea of what that's going to cost the long-term. So that's the bulk of the overtime for that. Unless there's questions, I'll move on to Page Four, which is Police Pension, which again is a obligation that I really don't have any control over. Health Insurance, same. Page Six, Dental Claims, same. Uniform Allowance. As I explained in my updates, we potentially could be looking at four new hires because of retirements, not to mention the possibility of including the one new hired that we are currently in the process of hiring. So a total of five, which could affect our uniform allowance, which is going to be, again, contractual CPI, Consumer Price Index. So that's where that increase comes from. Next Page, Training. This one, again, a significant increase from the previous year. We're looking at roughly an additional $55,000 in additional training costs. And that's because of, we are estimating the potential for those new hires to be entry-level candidates. If they're entry-level candidates, which require them to go to Basic Academy, which we're looking at about $11,000 per recruit. Now understand that, you know, some of that, if not most of it, could be reimbursed by the state. But that reimbursement is sometimes inconsistent and the state will just essentially send us a check and let us know what they're going to pay us. So we don't always have an accurate figure on what that reimbursement's going to be. Plus the fact that some of those laterals could be, or some of those hires could be laterals, which is also going to affect that training budget as well. So this is just in a projection that we are looking at as a worst-case scenario. But if that worst-case scenario does come true, it could potentially be an additional Unless there are questions. Page Nine, Repairs and Maintenance. This is an increase of 3.74% from the previous year and primarily due to yearly increases by the XRY Data, which is a software program that our detectives use for data gathering, as well as we are looking to increase our photo lineup software by one. What that is, is it's software that we have on a computer that allows us to conduct photo lineups that allow us to comply with statutory requirements. Otherwise, next Page Ten, Repairs and Maintenance Vehicle. This is a decrease from the previous year of 7.87%. In part, we've reduced our budget for vehicle maintenance by 10,000. And that's due to primarily the warranties that we have on our vehicles now. We are starting to see a benefit from having those warranties for our patrol vehicles and that's reflected every year. For the last three years, plus, last three years, we have seen a decrease in that particular line item. Our Beast Evidence Maintenance is going up $50 from 900 to 950. Otherwise, all other line items are the same. Page Eleven, Telephone and Utilities. This has gone up 10.87% only because Motorola has increased our service for our portable radios from $25,000 to $30,000. It's a increase that we have, we're required to absorb primarily because at this point, we don't have any other alternatives for portable radios. We use Motorola. They've kind of dictate the pricing and that's what it is currently, so. Page Twelve, Physical Exams, much like Chief Shadle said, unless our officers turn in those co-pays, that's the bulk of physical exams. Otherwise, I mean, I know the city does provide, you know, flu testing, TB testing, things of that nature for the city employees. There are, or have been, some occasions where we've needed to use that line item for some additional physical testing that we've had for officers, for fitness, for duty and things of that nature. But that's not necessarily the norm. Primarily, it's just a budget for those that utilize the contractual benefit. Community Policing, the city's not requesting any additional funds this year. We've looked at what we've been able to do with the allotted amount for last year and previous years and that budget amount is something that we can continue to work with, so. Fourteen, K-9 Program Expenses, slight increase of 5.95% from the previous year. And that's due to a increased request for kennel time. Kennel Time is what we have to pay or what the city or department has to pay anytime one of our canine officers goes on vacation and we have to kennel the dog. Previous years, we budgeted $800. But projecting out the number of hours that both of our canine officers have, it's realistic that there could be an additional cost with canine kennel time. So it's one of those scenarios where we're looking to budget additional funds for it. We won't know until either next year or the year after if that projection's going to be accurate and how much those officers actually use that time, so. If there's no questions, I will go to Fifteen, Sex Offender State Dispersments. This is something that by statute we're required to send to the state. Anytime we collect money from sex offenders, which is statutorily required. So as you see there, there's different dispersments to different entities within the state, treasurer, state police, attorney general. We collect $100 anytime a sex offender registers or we get a new registrant and then the money has to get dispersed to those different entities in those amounts. And there is a small percentage that the city does claim as revenue throughout the Page Sixteen, Office Supplies. We would not be requesting any additional funds for office supplies this year. We've been able to equip our officers with the supplies that they need with the current funding source. Seventeen, Gas and Oil. Projection, we're looking at a $1,000 increase over the previous year. Again, that's a projection based on the number of gallons we've used year-to-date times an estimated cost per gallon. So that's how we got that figure. Eighteen, Operating Supplies. We're requesting an 11% reduction and that's primarily due to, last year we had $6,000 in this line item for thumb drives. Previously, any evidence that we had to turn over to the state's attorney's office or had to copy for discovery, we were needing to place that evidence on a thumb drive due to the amount of video information or data that was required. We have since been able to implement a digital system where we put that same information into a digital format and then transmit that over to the state's attorney's office digitally, which has not made it necessary for us to use so many thumb drives. So we've taken that fund or request or funding out of that particular line item, so, which is $6,000 savings from the previous year. Next Page Nineteen, Miscellaneous Expenses. It just says Fire Department. Yeah. Actually, this year, we are reducing this particular line item, almost a 40% reduction from the previous year. Primarily, we've seen a reduction of cost in paper tickets because we've gone to digital tickets. So that's roughly $3,500. We've reduced our publication costs based off usage, $600. Our general supplies based off usage, $500. But in anticipation for pending retirements, we have requested an additional $500 for lunch meetings. What's that? We'll work on that for next year.
It would just go into a different item, though.
Exactly. Page Twenty, Equipment, looking at 31.75% reduction and primarily that's due to, we removed Motorola radios, which was a $16,000 line item, and the Level Four Shield, which was purchased this year for our SWAT team, which was budgeted at $6,825. We have noted a slight increase per request for computer simply due to the software that we're having to buy for these computers. It's not just the hardware we're having to buy. There is a slight cost for the software that is required to operate all of these new computers. Any questions on the equipment?
Alderwoman Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't see anything about the counseling. Isn't that mandatory?
It is mandatory and it's already incorporated into our community policing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't a new one for this year, so. Digiticket Supplies. This is a budgeted request simply if we run into a scenario where the funds that the state provides through their fines and fees, if we find ourselves where it doesn't allow us enough funds through that funding source through the state for supplies, new hardware, paper, things like that, that we have a small line item that is able to pay for those things. Capital Expenditures. This year, we're requesting four Durangos. I know there's been conversation previously about the potential for Stellantis to go to electric chargers. In anticipation of that, we're requesting Durangos to replace the squad cars that we'd be rotating out of the fleet. The estimate, and it's just that, estimate of $275,000 for four Durangos, that's roughly $68,750 per vehicle. There isn't current pricing out. We extrapolated that cost from the vehicle pricing that we got currently for this year. But that also includes the equipment that is required to outfit each one of those squad cars. With the replacement of the current squad cars for this year, we would be rotating all of our vehicles that are no longer warranted and all of our patrol vehicles then would be under that warranty system that we've been working towards over the last four or five years. So we would anticipate to continue to see a increase in savings for maintenance costs over the long-term because of that. To give you an idea, at least currently, it would be our intent to replace, like I said, four squad cars, two 2015s and two 2017s, primarily due to either maintenance history or mileage. We have one 2015 with 133,000 miles on it. The roof is rusting out and essentially it rains inside the car anytime it gets wet. We have a 2017, which we've experienced roughly $9,200 in repairs in the last few years and it has 350,000 engine miles on it. A 2017 Patrol Charger with roughly 11,000 in repairs and 452,000 engine miles on it. And it, that one needs a brand-new engine. And then we have a Nether Patrol Charger that has had about $15,000 in maintenance repairs and 300, almost 400,000 in engine miles on it. Otherwise, that would be the squad cars. Next, for Equipment. We'd be requesting potentially 10 new portable radios. So the history with this, as most of you will remember, probably about six, seven years ago, the department identified the Motorola XTS 2500s had gotten to end-of-service life. So we had anticipated rotating those out and purchasing new radios. There was some discussion internally on how to go about doing that. Five years ago, when I was appointed chief, I determined that in an attempt to become, to be, you know, fiscally responsible and minimize the financial impact to the city, we were going to try and take four radios per year and replace them that way. We've been doing that for the last four or five years and we intended on doing that this year. When we contacted Motorola, they informed us that those Motorola 4000 radios are reaching end-of-service life this year. So the next question was then, what are our options? They said that the only radio that they're going to be offering is the next radio, which is the APX N70. The advantage of the APX N70, besides its enhanced encryption, it will allow officers to connect to the LTE cellular service. So currently, our radios are restricted to radio frequency solely, which can be problematic when you're in the heart of buildings such as schools or businesses. when you're in the heart of buildings such as schools or businesses. You can lose connectivity, which we've done actually through trainings. The cell service would provide the officers the ability then, during those circumstances, to switch over to the cell towers and maintain their connectivity, and therefore stay in touch with other officers, or dispatch, or provide additional information when necessary. Unfortunately, with those additional radios, they're significantly more expensive. They're $7,300 per radio versus the $4,500 that we were paying with the 4000s. The Motorola told us that radios do have about a 10-year service life to them, so unfortunately, when we started buying the 4000s, they were already about halfway through their service life unbeknownst to us. Apparently, that was something that either wasn't asked, or just wasn't offered. Nonetheless, this is where we find ourselves currently, so if we attempted to do what I did previously, which is rotate them through four radios a year at a time, by the time we replaced our entire fleet, the radios would be out of service life anyhow. The other alternative is to attempt to replace more radios per year, and by the time we would be able to outfit the entire department, we'd still be through the halfway service life of these radios, but we would still have potentially five years of service life left. What does service life mean? It doesn't mean the radios wouldn't be good anymore, that's just not the case, because we're still operating with some of our 2500s. It means they stop making parts for them, and those parts become more and more difficult to find. And the more time that goes beyond those service life, the more difficult it becomes to find those parts. So we virtually, I mean, we're cannibalizing our 2500s to keep the ones that we have afloat. The 4000s, eventually, will start having to do that for the few that we have. But, so, looking at the cost of these portable radios, you know, at the direction of the mayor and Shannon, we started looking for potential other funding sources. We approached 911. Unfortunately, they're unable to help with anything that is connected to the hip or body of an officer or firefighter, so they're not going to be able to assist with funding. However, the mayor was able to assist with potentially finding, funding through the state. So I have solicited the state for all 50 radios, and we're still waiting on a response on whether or not the state will come back with either funding for all 50, and if not all 50, how many of those radios they would be willing to fund. So it's very possible that this line item may be moot, but if the state doesn't come through, and we're not able to come up with another funding source, Deputy Chief Wallace, because I know the fire department found a grant for theirs, Deputy Chief Wallace has looked for a grant currently, there isn't one for law enforcement at this point in time, so that's kind of where we're at with that. So, you know, ideally, we're able to find other funds that isn't taxpayer money. Worst-case scenario, we find ourselves potentially in a situation where we are going to end up having to replace these radios, and that would be, my recommendation is to replace them 10 at a time, only due to the limitation of the years of service for the life of each radio. Any questions on that?
Alderman Snow.
So with the new radios, and them having the ability to pick up on cell towers, does that mean they need dedicated cell numbers, AKA more billing for new cell numbers?
No, that is not my understanding. I'm not exactly sure how that software within the radio currently works, but it does, it is something, as Motorola explained to us, they're capable of doing. So they didn't explain that there would be additional costs or cell service required per radio.
Continue.
And this is more for Shannon, I don't think, did anybody get a copy of that page in their book? None of us got that page in our book.
Alderman Porter, and then Alderwoman Freeman.
Chief, I think you had said previously, I just wanted to clarify this, that the state is the one that's basically forcing us to buy the Motorola radios, we can't go with any other brands?
You know, and Motorola is something that, the company we've been using ever since I started, so probably the last quarter century. They are the, they're the company, and maybe the fire chief, because I know you've done some, some research with them, can expand upon this, but they are the primary service provider for emergency services. They've got the infrastructure and the equipment that, you know, law enforcement, fire departments, and first responders in general use, and they're familiar with the needs that first responders have. Please.
The Motorola Starcom 21 network is the network that, no matter what brand of radio you buy, there are, Kenwood is another brand of radio that you can buy, but it does operate on the Starcom network, and the most, another just as expensive as the radio is the user fees. To go back to the cellular, how the radio, I believe you don't have to turn it on, but I do believe there is a fee if you want to have the cellular connectivity, but they don't offer it without it anymore. So it is just that more expensive radio. If you were to utilize that, they also work, I believe, on Wi-Fi, so what it does is, say, like, we have a commercial building like Stellantis, and they'll let us have their Wi-Fi password, it'll go from whatever signal's the strongest, that's just what it will operate on, so they're actually, but as far, I, we're kind of in the same problem, all the radios that we just purchased were Apex 4000s, you know, they, our HT 1250s worked for like 25 years, right? Like, we didn't, didn't see that coming, so I, I mean, we're, we'll work together and work with 911 too, and, and grants, just to see, maybe Kenwood's might be an option for us, because I know that Kenwood radios do operate on the Starcom network, but again, our provider of service to the dispatch center is a Motorola, but we would not be able to get off the Starcom 21 network, that's, that infrastructure is Motorola through and through, and there, I would imagine, is a benefit to using Motorola equipment on a Motorola network, and so, you know, that, if there is a savings, we'll, I'm sure Chief will look into that too, but I wouldn't expect that to be too much of a viable option, it might be, but it's, we're just finding out that these things are getting discontinued in real time, you know?
Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you, this isn't for the radios, chief, but I just wanted to ask you if replacing the patrol chargers with Durangos is substantially more expensive, or no?
It is more expensive, the Durangos are, you're probably talking about a $5,000 increase from one to the other. But, you know, because I know the council had asked previously, just inquired about, you know, other potential vehicles besides the Dodge product, and, you know, previously, we have looked at the Fords, and the only other real alternative for police vehicle would be like a GMC product. The Fords are going to be even more expensive than what the Durangos are, and there's really not a viable sedan option for the Ford, just due to size, in my opinion. And then the GMC is going to be even more expensive than, than the Ford. So the Dodge Durango is really, given the circumstances, the more reasonable option, and one of the reasons why we've continued to, you know, use those beyond just the fact that Stellantis is here in Belvidere.
Thank you.
And unless there's questions, I'll, I can move on to the patrol remodel. And I'll pass these out, just for you to take a look at. The patrol model was on the, a budget request last year, it's something that we weren't able to get done. The council had approved last budget cycle for the police department to utilize impact fees, and it simply would allow additional computer stations and accommodate the growth that the department is, is seeing and anticipates going forward. So what Chief Shadle is handing out is just some mock-up, you know, computer-generated photos of what our intent would be for the patrol office. Currently, we've been working with ANCO, but, you know, since some time has gone by, well, we would ultimately end up having to go out and, and see different companies and get some different ideas, but ultimately, we believe we could get, get it done for that $20,000 request.
Any other questions for Chief Woody? Alderman Porter?
One quick question, regarding the mandatory training through the Safety Act, I assume that there's no state reimbursement for that at all?
No, sir, unfunded mandate. And just one more note as far as the patrol remodel, the patrol office has not, this particular portion of it has not been remodeled since its original construction, which would have been probably 97, 96? Huh? I don't think so. No, because I believe it was, well, maybe, maybe it was, because I was a dispatcher, so, so maybe it was, maybe you remember better than I. So, maybe, maybe it was 95, 94, 95, so. So, long time, long, long time.
All right, anything else? Any other questions? All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you for your work and helping us put that together, and when you look at both the departments, and you realize that we're talking about significant increases for a lot of different things, for essentials, as well as, you know, radios, vehicles, and what have you, I thought we did a good job, I thought it's realistic that we did hold these to a minimum where we could, the unfunded mandates and what have you, they speak for themselves, but I appreciate it, because everything costs more, and I think we're all well aware of that, so, thank you for working on that. I guess we will move on here, that'll give council members a chance to further look at that in your packet, and disseminate that, and as we go forward. Under other, five under other, we have item A, the liquor license renewal. City Attorney Drella drafted a memo that went with that, and it says, "In an attempt to streamline liquor license renewal procedures, we are proposing the attached amendments." They do not substantively change any regulations, and so when you look at Section 1080, the changes that he has crossed out, and that are underlined, are accordingly in A, section of Section 1080, and also one, or two, actually, with the, the year in Section B. And those are the only changes, the only amendments to that, so this would come back in an ordinance form, but I would entertain a motion, then I guess, to make the changes regarding amendments to, an amendment to Section 1080 renewal of the licensed city of Belvidere municipal code, as noted. Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. They will, it will come back to you with these changes, is there any questions regarding them? The city attorney would be more than happy to answer them for me. All right, hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor then. Those in favor will answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, motion passed, and then we have item B, resolution, release of certain executive session minutes pursuant to five ILCS 120/1. And we had talked about that, actually, in our executive session, and this, this resolution shows Schedule A, which are to remain confidential with the corresponding dates, and then the release of the information on Schedule B, and I guess I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2023-2, the release of certain executive session minutes pursuant to five ILCS 120/1 as they appear. Motion? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any questions regarding, any concerns regarding that motion? Seeing none? All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, motion passed, and that's all we have for this evening's agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, we're adjourned for the record at 8:30 PM. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate your time.